We're recording and the mic is on now.
Right, straight away. Okay, so we are recording. It is 6:08. This is in the room. This is three. We have one attendee. We have one attendee allowed to talk, just in case. Okay, so we're going to call this meeting in order. It is 6:08. This is the regular Board Meeting of the Danville School Board of Directors. It's Tuesday, September 3rd. All in the room, let's go ahead and introduce ourselves around just the same. My name is Satan Cargill on the board chair. I have two.
Tim is that board member?
Matt Foster Superintendent.
I hope you can hear that. Okay. Great, thanks everybody. A couple members of the public here. Moving on, did anybody have any additions or changes to this agenda? I got you, she's on. So nothing, nothing that's on the agenda. I'm going to move on from that. I have also only agenda three sets of minutes to approve. The first is July 2nd minutes. That was our last regular meeting in July. We didn't have any in August. That was the longer meeting. Where we came back together in July. Introduced our new superintendent. And. I think there's a discussion about upcoming meetings, but I would probably never have a chance to go through those. I wrote on all those questions bottom. I entertain a motion to approve those minutes, July 2nd. So move. I have a motion. I have a second over there as well. Eric and then Tim. All in favor of approving the July 2nd minutes? Please say aye. July 2nd minutes led to, motion carries. July 2nd minutes led to the July 11th minute. Minutes. Was it a building committee meeting? A couple days later, any questions? Anybody anything? Tim this time, Tim second. From Eric. All in favor of approving the July 11th? Please say aye.
Aye.
Alright, motion carries. August 13th, we got back together to do one hire, one at night. We hired a new. A new cookie teacher. So. We wanted that one, Matt. The assistant superintendent was that one. Any questions about those minutes?
Mr. Colton? Let's see.
So any questions about those minutes? Here and then I entertain a motion to approve those minutes. Thank you, Tim. Motion to approve those minutes on the table. Second. Motion seconded. All in favor of approving August 13th minutes? Please say aye. Great, motion carries. Alright, moving down.
I'm sorry, I'm seeing that there's not a 70 request under board business, but it's in the packet.
But it's.
It's not a part of, it wasn't part of our report. It's a total. It's totally separate thing.
So I put 70 requests.
You want to just start what you can do.
Is that an facility improvement?
No. I specifically went back in for 70 requests. Onto this agenda on. I had it on there. It was on the draft agenda and I thought. It's supposed to be on there. So I cannot currently. Go back. I'm going to go back. I'll go back and then, because it was, it's in the packet. It was asked, it was on the draft agenda and it came out.
Yep.
So I'm going to go back to addition changes of the agenda because this was supposed to be on there and it's in the packet. It's just not written down. So I'm going to add, add this to the agenda. 70 fund request. It's in the packet.
Yeah, so move.
I thought it was in there. This is going to be my fault. Anybody that's got to write down anything. 70 fund request. Thank you for finding that so quickly because I'm adding it now.
I did just second it now.
That's a motion to second it. Add 70 fund request, which was in the packet, which talked about. All in favor of adding that to the bottom of the agenda? Please say aye.
Can you say the bottom?
I mean, I'm going to put it underneath facility improvement. I'm going to add that on there and then I will call the SBA and ask them what I'm supposed to do now.
Do we have to specify action? We're taking action?
This is.
This is possible action.
So. What's probably going to happen. I'm going to add it for, what's probably going to happen is I've got to figure out what we're going to add. I'm in this tonight because the paperwork is there and we know what it's about. I'm going to talk to the IT's been oral and I'm going to see how I have to fix the action we take tonight. And then whether we have to, you know, review ourselves for whatever.
Then we could check the website. Maybe it was posted differently on website.
I don't think.
Yeah, it would have been the same document.
Okay, alright.
So. Anyway, it's on the agenda now. I'll go by crook and I'll leave with the minutes and things as I like.
Yeah, maybe maybe we just change one because there was 70 on. There was 70. Talk about the additional facility.
The intent is.
Assume that all together and change that.
Ends in a back. Yeah.
Yes, we have.
We're still on one action on that.
Yeah, so it's intentions enough. What we may end up having to do. Is go back in the next meeting or in a special meeting and redoing the action to make it legal. Right now, I was going to put the action. And. It's minor. This is minor. Just, this is, I'm deep in the minutia of board chairs. I put it on there.
How, how long do they have to relearn for before we do that?
So this, it was, this has been one, 24 hours before officially with actions in the packet. You have to learn that for action. To play the action that you want.
Yeah. So 24 hours. So like, what was the scenario of really an emergency thing in two days, I guess?
It would be a work. Yeah, it was special. Special, sorry. Yeah.
Did it say anything about you looking into it with the SBA in the minutes and coming back to it or is it that it has action?
Yeah. Yeah, so we're. When I look down again at this, it wasn't on the agenda. It wasn't on the agenda of its own packet. Then I realized that we have an error in our.
Right.
In our agenda. And I didn't pick up on it. And so I'm going to have to contact the SBA to figure out how to.
Correct.
Do correctly. Change into error. The agenda right. Fell off the.
I mean, do we just want to circumvent all that? If we can get three of us here in two days. Come here and take care of that.
Well, now we put it on the. Motion. Now we motion to put it into action.
The only question is it wasn't warned, so that's the question whether that would be.
For the 24 hours.
Right.
Right, we.
You'll figure it out.
We can do. Without. Because this is. See.
The. Four and a half.
So I will, I will for you asking for motion. I'll move to.
It's already. It's already made. It's already seconded. It's already added.
We're just talking about.
We're just trying to figure out what we're going to do. We're lost in the weeds. I'm going to move on. I'm going to move on. What I have. So what I have now. So superintendent report came out Friday in the packet. I mean, I don't know if there are any questions between that about superintendent report. I guess there are two meetings going on. Is the superintendent is in person?
Correct, thank you.
There's a lot of stuff in superintendent report that pertains specifically to the work that Mike Marotti is doing. And we were trying to ask, we're reading the superintendent reports if this gets delineated. And so some of it is delineated, some of it is specific to some of the stuff regarding hires. And some of the stuff regarding licensure and teachers, which was given by Mike. And so, but you can ask the questions, Matt. And this has all been laid out at the CPS meeting most recently. It's just a couple weeks ago.
And just for everybody's satisfaction, I try to get every department to put into the superintendent's report. So everybody, and I'm not trying to take credit for things. Technology. Marcia, you know, Michael Conches, finance, you know, super, says superintendent. I didn't put Mike's name there because he wrote this up. If you want to put his name there, you can put his name there. Just trying to delineate. I'm compiling a lot of pieces there as well. I found that's appropriate.
So are there questions for the superintendent on this report?
Thank you for putting in this information in there.
It's a big. Some form.
And there was maybe a. Your. I caught the last few minutes on Monday today talking about that.
Alright, no questions. Moving on, student services report. Student services report comes in. Are there any questions about the student services report?
I don't know if you haven't noticed. Do we know?
We can't even ask that. Just one. We, we can't even ask that. That's, you can be Danville related, so. So he's just asking a Danville related question.
One.
We also wanted to, that's listed in the principal's report, which is where we're headed now. So ladies, if I'd like to take it to some of the stuff that's on the principal's report, because there's a lot.
So very.
I think the form is just like. Uh, yeah. A little reading program. Uh, so. Book of forms for the girls, right? Most of them are last week, so the teachers started today for the first time. I mean. I've got a reading from everybody. Yes. That's a lot of. So those things. Coupled with station and the space program. And. Where is I did look at that kind of ready? There's a time that reading community has a significant, significant, significant start. We've got a lot of work to be ready that this is going to have a lot of. Jump off of. And then. And stick it up in the late because the program is in the pilot, so. For the middle school, ELD, Kylie and Mary Grace Seven. The decision for. Um, we did my whole lunchy for the summer. Sarah and I were interviewing Michael Wild, so we are bringing aboard Lindsay Presley for middle school para educator. Down. School. Katie Carthy, just substitute for us in the past, who's come to the country para. Coral Lopez, resigned her position as. A para in tech ed program and come back as a special ed para. High school. Amanda Stevens is long-term sub for us. She is joining us at the elementary level. And then John Corless was the most recent of those final three teaching hires. So James Hughes is our middle school social teacher. Corless is at middle and high school culinary in Parkson is at middle and high school health and P D. Those are all our new hires. Still looking for one more para educator. A G.
Or the handle, the description of how we want to handle it.
We can talk about it, maybe both. This is the data since I started prior to my party. It wasn't. It all has something to do with it. So it's not easy to drive. Um, but pretty little numbers. We have both of us as well as our student support staff who are all trained. Follow through with all the. Could you just follow my investigations that you see? Um, following processes. The lawyer from the state very laid out as to how it flows. Those are detailed out in the handbook to exactly what it's going to be. So the numbers are pretty low. I think one of the interesting things that I found. Sometimes. Even though there's violations, there's multiple kids that we work with support. Sometimes it's. I developed, but no one indicated that it was struggling to work with support.
As you look at those numbers from year to year, do you have kids that may have. Were active in one year and no longer are because of the supports they've had? I mean, those are good things, I think, to bring out.
Yes. Yeah.
The numbers are too small.
No, but you could just say we've had some success where we've had some children that. Committed and have not recommitted.
Right, so. What I was going to say is. Small, the dog and. But we have, we do a lot of work with S E L to support that.
Oh, I'm sorry.
S E L would be the social emotional learning.
Oh, learning, okay. What is that? Sorry.
Developing the whole, you know, so the core design and the little process there is looking a little big problem.
Teamwork skills.
Not. Any means. Just our customers. They play a role, just like small.
So we need a limit. An example of the. Here is an example. Quick event.
Quick event, processing how a kid. Has their big emotions and what they can learn differently. All, all both of them. Whether that's the teacher, whether that's para educator, whether that's student support staff. Me, Natalie. Yeah. So it's basically. Not necessarily apart from, but a part of how you approach behavior in the school. So let's say, you know, you shout at the teacher inappropriately. Okay, we're going to correct that and so we're trying to figure out why and then get to the root of that. Oh, you were upset because something happened with your dog this morning before you got to school. Okay, so the counselor or the behavior support person or Sarah, we are going to suss that out with you in a conversation. And that's where you'll see some of the. Kind of not so flattering jokes about S E L or like PBIS online where it's like the kid leaves with a lollipop and you know how bad because we talked about feelings. The leaving with a lollipop is not necessarily true, but we totally are talking about your feelings and how you're processing your day and the events of your life and then your. How you're presenting your circle world after that. So it's not as just cut and dry as kid was a bully and so we punished him. Like, well, a kid displayed a bullying behavior and yeah, there was a consequence and it's the social. Yeah, that's what we hope to not have.
Recipism.
Yeah. You know, so you don't want to repeat offender. You want to give them a skill. So it's like if a kid is. That they're lacking skill. So that's. And it's. It's really a foundation. Believing that kids are regulated emotionally. Right, like they're fed. Those simple basic four needs. They're not even going to be able to access their. So really making sure when we.
I think you can go back, you know, years and years and years ago, they talked about classroom management. They didn't think about it as more of a, as an S E L lens, but as you didn't have good classroom management, you weren't able to have kids access to. We've got a little more. Clear rules and things of that nature. Some of the roadblocks to kids being successful and under emotions, things of that nature.
Because there's a point that the, like the kids that are in the class witnessing this too, because I know that can be traumatic. Is there a component to when all the other kids in the class are witnessing a meltdown or they're looking at the bullying and what happens with, with that part as well? I think that's seen a little bit more along the dream. The tantrums that are always right are a little bit different, but there's always a restorative circle or a restorative practice or something. Some aspect of that, whatever's appropriate for the kids in the situation. And an opportunity for the kids to share how that affected them and the real impact that had. The, the. Yeah, that was scary when this happened or that was, I think, yeah. How did that make you feel? So it's validating that. The whole point is that, you know, one kid had a behavior, but it affected the whole community and then had to be reintegrated.
Right, and it was. Sure that. So that's like a people.
But a lot of what we're. S E L. The one. Is sometimes. It might be a problem. Moment. If somebody or someone else is in the room. So give it a moment. That way you're going to.
A little bit of air out. We're good to go.
A little bit.
We all need moments.
Yep.
It's. Behavior, like manifesting two times. Manifesting a way that seems like I hit.
And what behavior you might go out and do out in the outside world might be totally appropriate, but here in the classroom, you got 20 other kids trying to figure out how to learn how to read. It's a lot different. So you got to be able to talk about context for those kiddos and what's appropriate.
So a lot of times you fall into trouble. S E L manifest. How it manifests. It's hard to explain to somebody. Know the. Still trying to figure out what the second.
Just like if I was in a doctor's office and they're explaining things to me with a bunch of letters. Walk me through what is that.
Just hard for them questions. Those are. I have more questions with the actual thing, but I.
Um, we have a list of data of the post-secondary plans of Danville students. Simon Fisher helped compile that for me from. 2020 on.
Good, thank you for this.
I'm sorry, we moved a little further back than that, but. That's what we've got. We've always had a big portion of kids coming into the workforce, but you can see the, the trends over to there. And we had our staff of the year.
That was me.
Yeah. Proud of Danville, I know. So Cassie Vogel are fantastic as assistant for support staff, Kate Miller at elementary and Abby Bartel secondary. And Kate Miller was also nominated as the SU's.
Teacher of the year. U V M teacher.
For U V up. Well, that means, I mean, she has the potential to win it for the whole entire state.
I need a picture of her.
I know. I have asked several times. Also, remember the sickness? We had no special educators, so.
I remember that.
And then a plan, uh, it's going to back playing field this weekend. Saturday.
That's great.
Yeah. It was a good, a good turnout last year and a positive. Community.
Any questions? One. If not, one. One wants to. With Deske back. Again about. Plan how it is being implemented specifically in Danville. She was at the CCS meeting in another. It was more of a.
And I think that, um, I do have some slides with some information. And I think the best way to share that.
You can. Get it up there? Good, because mine wasn't selecting it.
Yeah. Is this library one or library two? It was. But it should, it should get my nudge.
Excellent.
Maybe. So it was just spinning for a second. Give it a minute. And I will start by just introducing myself again. So this is my beginning of my third year in the SU and. A little bit.
Doesn't go with me either.
Yeah.
Are you also.
I can see here.
To hear. To the meeting place? The virtual meeting.
Not sure.
Yeah, the word.
Maybe it's Eric. It might just be. It usually just doesn't.
Yeah, yeah. It makes me wonder if it'd be connected to the internet.
Yeah.
I've got.
But the TV has.
I sure.
It's not so full.
Like you.
Yeah.
Just put a wire in.
Just do that.
Check.
This.
We got this. For right?
Correct.
You leave the link for this. I found out the. Yeah, that's.
I know, it's funny.
Yeah, it's just spinning.
And almost.
Thanks, Sarah.
Thank you, Sarah. It's impressive.
Yeah, everybody see that?
Yep.
See that?
That's not great.
I choose if you're going. An idiot. So.
I actually, I just do, yes.
It didn't know. That's pretty good. That's.
So what I always say is that, um, since I came on board. It is a role to be willing. Standing your line on earth. What we're like digging for. For academic achievement. And also. Centering. And how it's used in our classrooms. It's used in teams as a teachers. At the school level and at the school level, so that it's really, really useful. The thinking, you know, like that, what is the. How can we. If we improve that picture? Organized it together and how can we use it to drive decision making from the classroom level? To the SU level. Uh, so here we are, beginning of year three. And, um, this slide really talks about what's required of. Every. Through the union and school district in the state and that's the local system. So education quality standards. Requires that every SU has one of those. And that is supposed to be what they call balanced and comprehensive. So, yeah, like Sarah and Natalie were just talking about. In your really great examples of social learning learning, it's like. Assessment happens in so many different ways. In our. In the moment with a teacher and a child. With Natalie, the hallway, the middle school students. And assessing. Other feeling. It happens at the end of a unit with a test the teacher creates that you've all taken in school. It happens at the end of the year. With a substantive assessment, BT cap assessment. And then it happens three times a year in the SU through something that's called. Progress monitoring. And that's. I'm going to do a star. So. That is hopefully not too jherney and. A little bit of a picture of how assessment happens in the SU. The big picture.
Can I get a copy of this from the minutes?
Yeah.
We don't have, we don't have this yet, though, right?
You don't have it yet.
If you, if you don't mind, that would be great. I can link it.
Yeah, sure. Um, like a second ago, you just. Mentioned N T S S is one of those acronyms. That'll be that's super education. But this is how we are working towards using data all the time in iterative process in the SU. So. About screening students. That starts, that you just mentioned, that's happening three times a year. And then taking that information. Responding to it. Looking at those kiddos who are not achieving where you want them to be achieving or are little red flags. Doing a deeper dive, finding out what's going on. Providing interventions. Monitoring other set assessments. And then adjusting in a cyclical manner. And Sarah and Natalie, please edit. If I'm missing something. So. We're always. Towards this process and we're using data in the SU. And this doesn't. And this.
Sure, yeah, but I was. Uh, I was talking about using this for measuring the improvement of. I think there's a few different. Because I want to see a 5% improvement. So. Should I say questions for her later or?
No, I think it's fine for.
I'm really sorry. So you talked a lot about like, okay, finding out kids that might be lagging behind. What are our kids that are doing? What are our kids that are doing really well? So do we have ways to accelerate them and challenge them? Or are they just sort of, hey, you're doing great.
There's an expression that a lot of us are familiar with. They explore and refining. Universal design for learning, so designing learning opportunities that meet all students. Also, give it a process, never ending, right? But the phrase that I like to think about is teach to teach teachers. So when you're using that assessment data, you're thinking about, you know, Tim who's off the charts in this area. And what you can do to provide opportunities for maybe deep reverting. Or application of the skills that Tim has. While you're also thinking about that student who is a question mark for you. And maybe his own profile according to this one assessment that's needing you to believe that there's a gap.
So this will be up to the teacher to be accommodating the students in the classroom, not necessarily an advanced class. Or this would be more the teacher needs to accommodate all of these students in one classroom?
I mean, that's the idea of that and four, like four structures. It's really hard.
Does that work?
I mean, I think realistically, and I can't speak specifically to what happens in Danville. Realistically, it works for those who are motivated. When they're working on that edge. If they are self-motivated, it works. Because you're providing them opportunities for growth. But because it's not necessarily always, and it can be. But if it's really hard to call for that at their level, it has, they have to be motivated to find their own growth at that edge. Whereas at the other edge, you're supported differently. You are supported in the classroom, but you also might have an intervention.
And I think we're working really hard. It's not just a single teacher to kind of circle back around. Talk about that a little bit in the presentation too, that one of the things that's appealing in CCSU. We're looking at how we're working as teachers to look at that information. And collaboratively strategize about what we're doing to support our kids. Some types of operating, so we need a K two team that's looking at that assessment information. Evidence of learning, I sometimes call it. And what are we going to do to support these kids? Those conversations where we're really working as a church of refining and strength and teachers. What do you do when this happens with this kiddo? What are your ideas for acceleration, for getting that understanding and for building skills? Yeah.
And there are times too when you do accelerate. So we have algebra available to eighth graders, even less on eighth grade class. Or there was an eighth grader who was accelerated in English and started taking high school English class. And so they earned a credit for high school courses as an eighth grader.
That's not only so many schools.
No. But yeah, no, I mean, we strategically sometimes place kids in a certain section. Likely have algebra one and pre-algebra running in the same period that you could move between them easily. If you need to pump up or you need to go to pre-algebra, but.
It is database and it's having the confidence. Mass is one of the easiest places to accelerate that learning. It's also the easiest place to see where their gaps are. And so, you know, being confident that we put this kid in algebra one, that they have the foundation or skill. Across the spectrum, they're really good at it. They're able to do all of that. Can handle the next grade level.
This is a different, a whole different group of people in a whole different environment and it becomes a totally different thing. And so that's, that's, that's a whole different movement like that. Not anybody they know, any class now.
And I think that there's, I was purposeful in my words about the deepening understanding. Because there's a difference between sometimes you're ready for the next level. And how do you use these skills that you have already mastered and apply them in maybe your life setting? Or in a problem that needs to be solved in your classroom, in your school, in your community? To help kids influence their learning and see the purpose of it. So it's a tall order for teachers for sure. And that engagement piece is really important.
It sounds immensely difficult.
It is, it is. That's why when we, yeah, thank teachers, it's not a joke. They're also doing that social emotional component on top of that.
Are we asking them too much?
The question within questions that you have to show.
Sure, I understand, but the more I can understand, the more I can, you know, start to advocate, but also figure out. Sure, but yeah, so, yeah, I mean, it sounds like it's very difficult to teach to both edges at the same time. I mean, I, look, I totally understand there's fish and there's ducks and there's birds.
I think it's an important component and it's a big, especially. We are, we are small. But then we get each other. Not easily, but it's.
I know for sure. In committee, building committee meeting and then community forum, we're just all those kids in the same room. Have to deal with it. Then you can find better how to teach this.
And I think. Tim, this is something a minute ago that just, I think I want to continue to reiterate throughout this conversation. In that, I mean, back to that local assessment system. I think what you just said, Tim, was finding out how to teach to the edges using the information from different assessments. So you said something about it back. And I just want to reiterate that some of the data that we're looking at tonight. This is one piece of information that's taken from these students three times a year. It's not that far from the assessment. It's important. It needs to be taken in context of all the other data that's being gathered at the classroom level and at team level and at the school level. And then also being on how to collect and gather that data in the SU.
I'll just add to that a little bit where we talked about that not putting too much emphasis on one particular piece of data. We try to triangulate data, like to be able to say if we're looking at math, we're going to have three different pieces of information to save. It's really representative of what we have on days. You know, the best baseball hitters, 300 would be awesome, right? That means there are a lot of times they're not hit. We try to get more pieces to make a better picture. I think that's what I was really trying to share.
And to use. Right? But also, I would agree with you. So here's the thing that we're looking at, year right, because we're three. And really not just Danville, but throughout CCSU. Really establishing. On leadership team. Global teachers, global year, understanding some purposes of the assessments that we use. So why do you do this assessment? What information are you getting from it? How are we using it? And the STAR assessment, wire assessment on our SU. Something that all teachers, it will be this year, K through eight required to do. And then the BT cap is also required as a somewhat of a assessment. There are a lot of, well, there's assessments that you have the choice to use to do deeper dives into the learning. And so we're really talking about understanding and why are you using a assessment? And our leadership, this summer, I don't know, from an organization demonstrating success. We're working with the teachers and head of the SU contracted to them and they can do a data literacy workshop with wall of references. We all had complete understanding language about how we use it. The other thing we're doing is using common assessments of that decisions. Refining our support teams, which are called ESTs. So when you have a student that's on the edge, really not achieving as maybe as much as you think. Or have some people with their ideas that want to inspire them, keep them there, understanding. Teams come together, are centered around data. And Danville has a process. We work together because we find that one as a process. And we really need to be short of center. This last slide is exciting. At the end, I thought about a tool called Edgeclimber. It invited to Mark Tucker and Scott Marrier and Cindy. I think this is something that we could really use to help us organize and analyze. We look at what we have, we're getting all around. STAR has that, we have BT cap as well, but we don't have a comparative way of looking at. Other assessments are being used throughout the SU. I tried to collect some, a short story in my first year for K through two students. And I had to have all of these, all of these binary observation assessments for K through two. Some of them were data taken on paper by teachers, some were tables made on Google Sheets or Google Docs. Sheets. I don't know how to get them, I don't think you say how it is. So we need a way, so Edgeclimber is getting rolled out, really works for back end of the year. And we're going out to teachers this year so that they can have all the data.
We leave that at the student's attendance, things that refer how often the student was there to take part in, intervene in these things in nature. So it's fleshing out a lot more about how that works.
Yeah, you know, Sarah and I was at the principal's report. Simon had that info about his graduation. What's happening with his graduation and Sarah had to find a paper to look at, you know, the AJK and the line, trying to work with it. Any more questions?
And if you can develop that, you'll have a multimillion dollar piece of software.
We're giving ideas so we get pieces of that.
If we purchased it, it's something that would work like you, like with a company that's pretty cool. And we're not alone. A lot of SUs and confusing departments are using it. And so there's like a working group, Jen Lemery is like helping part of the special services. Okay. So now the part that kind of ties into the CIP and how we develop our CIP for the SU. And school-wide plans for each school. Danville's school-wide plan, the one that you have on your packet, this will last October. So not super valuable to you right now. Natalie and Sarah, I will sit down this fall. And one of our first tasks that we do is kind of look at our data from the spring of last year. And then we develop a school-wide plan based on our competition and everything. And there's a form for that that comes from SLS. This is all I'd like to, to some clients, what I need to do for the diagram. All right, so I'm going to show you some data. Anybody ready? And the first, the first piece of data is actually taken from Edgeclimber. So use your data that collated with STAR data. These are nice, show the data from 2022 through last spring. So if, I, I, yeah, can you get closer, who's doing all this?
And this is about CCSU's, I mean, STAR isn't state implemented. It's not.
No, it's not. It's a progress monitoring tool. And it is approved by the state as one of the.
All students in CCSU would take STAR assessments.
So. It has been until this year. All students in three through eight are required to take STAR three times a year. Fall. So it is part of that state requirement that we have a balance and comprehensive assessment.
Okay, gotcha.
And this is one of those. So the balance means like too much. Oh, I think kids are doing great qualitative data.
Right, right.
So this is a norm reference assessment. It's based on, and again, what there's right here, it is all of the students in Danville who took this test. That is mostly three through eight. It was optional. Some teachers are using it in grade three. Some teachers are also using it in ninth grade. You weren't. So you'll scratch that. This year, moving forward, students in kindergarten, first grade, second grade, up through eighth grade will be taking STAR. All of those, there's a STAR literacy assessment that we're going to be shifting to so that it makes it easier for us to have that whole kitchen table scenario that I just laid out. So the other thing that you might notice is that. So the green is at or above, which is. We set benchmarks, STAR recommends a lower benchmark. We've set a 50% proficiency rating for our SU. And the purpose of this assessment is to really help these kids. It's a screener and a sponsor. So you're looking for those kids that are falling way below, that need help. And the kids who are at the end of the spectrum as well. So really looking at different people, different tools. Of the kids that are in a range. That we really need to focus on. And who are the kids that are in that blue range? So at or above is 50% or above. The blue is 25% or 50%. The yellow is 9% and the urgent intervention is in the 10%.
Percentile.
Percentile of all students in the United States who have taken this. BT cap has a criteria for that, but they base it on a set standard. You'll also notice in the spring of 22, 23, this test that I did in Florida when I came on board was optional in the spring. It's not optional in the spring.
I mean, could we say with this that, I mean, things didn't change much, like us from fall. Is that twenty four, fall, twenty three, twenty four? No, it's okay.
Yeah.
The spring, I mean, I guess the intervention group got bigger. Just looking at comparatively, um, you know, would we be saying only use this? Like interventions aren't as successful.
You can start to draw a lot of these, right? And this is exactly what you do when you look at data layers. This is, teachers really wouldn't be looking at this because they're just their class.
Right, right.
What you would then do is you could drill down to the assessment. So we'll get just a particular student and see where they were, where their strengths like within the tests and where their data score. Then they could all say, boy, this is really not gigantic. It's a classroom. I'm going to do another that's on our local home office. And then we'll see. It would look this person's mind. And then see what else I can find out about this kid.
Yeah.
And those wheels, right? And we can just have to try and see what this is.
And the good for kids is that once they could have thoroughly looked in fall and then be great in spring.
Which is awesome.
Right, right.
It's important if you're looking, if you decide to delve into the tables, that you also sort of mark in your mind what the year is. And because you do have summer slide. Uh, and then you, and the kids are recruited and there's a lot of change between the individual years. So it's interesting to see the progression for a school year as well as overall.
It's almost linear in spring to get a better comparison than fall and spring.
It's all. In the school year, so this is fall, twenty three, twenty four, and spring. So there's a year difference. Right.
So are they normal, see each time they do this? So yes, so you really don't have a reason. You're really looking at all spring. You've actually sort of fallen a little bit behind where the norm is for the rest of the US.
Yeah.
That's sort of what I would say. Now.
It's not the same test.
No, I understand.
Right, but it's, it's so that they take and the questions change and questions change for each individual child as they.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, so I guess the question is, you know, what's, what is our, well, a lot of questions. But one of my questions, what is the top end of that? Because this covers about half of the data. But I just started saying everybody above fifty percent is great. Is our top end sixty fifth percentile? Is our top end the ninetieth percentile? Is our top end the ninety fifty percentile?
You said top end, I mean, you'll have kids that, you'll have some kids that are going to be ninety, ninety percentile. So when you say top end, you're just trying to say which.
Yeah.
Yeah.
This is where students are meeting at the fiftieth percentile.
We're seeing the more advanced kids that may be doing the ninety nine or.
Fifty eight year old.
Right.
So we could look at an individual student to see, you can see, you could drill that.
Yeah, I'm curious what sort of surprises are, especially since it's normalized to the United States. And it's an adaptive test like that. It's more like an actual exam than a CTE LSAT, right? So, um, yeah, I'm curious because that was telling you about where.
And I'm not getting into that much right now. They're actually having to follow up with you. But there are cut scores all over the like, the raw scores that STAR. Has a magic, so it will tell you like what the range is for that beginning of the year, middle of the year, and end of the year range.
Oh, no, yeah. With the percentile, because they're normalizing it and because they're doing the adaptive testing. It gives you a good idea of what your range of students looks like versus the range in the United States.
Yep.
It's kind of interesting.
So I'm just gonna shoot, I think I can do one more fifteen minutes. Others, because I know this is good, like if you're not really into data, it can be a lot. And then it'll just do it. Yeah. Um, and our academic achievement goal, we've, we've looked at two components. One is measuring years before. So our students growing over the courses a year and. We're looking for. To appropriate an expected amount, right? And also are they towards proficiency? Yes, I always like to think about like growth towards proficiency. So we want to see kids growing. But if they're always, if they're all below proficient and they're growing, they're not needing proficiency or above, then. We gotta do a little more to make sure they are. Which certainly backgrounds are centering data goal. Like really looking at it and what we're using and teacher level. So this shows our growth towards the benchmark, which is those cut scores that I just mentioned. And, um, Danville, we're growing the accepted normal growth rate is a thirty five to sixty five. And at Danville, we've got like six, this blue is about sixty, fifty percent of the kids are growing. At that, you know, after about that benchmark set by STAR. This gray is probably. Here you can see a gray. And there, those are the students who only took the test once. And so they don't have a comparison for growth. They have to have taken it at least twice to win those zero row actually. Well, I think they take all spring, they take that out. But especially for these third graders who are taking it for the first time. Yeah. This is reading that. All of it. And then, um. Math. And then seeing for what goes towards the benchmark. In math. At Danville, CSU, we want kids to be moving towards proficiency. We want to be able to measure growth towards proficiency in a variety of industries. So STAR is one of those measures that we can progress on for overtime. VT cap is that criterion, once a year, some of it's possible. How are they doing this window in time at the end of the year? What we use is a variety of data, not just STAR. A lot of different to look at how kids are doing academically and SEL wise for safe and healthy schools. Um, as a, I think I mentioned this one before in June. To look at the CIP, we, we dive into this several times a year. And monitor how our students are doing to our. I think about sizing those. Are that in a more focused form with each individual school? So Eric, a five percent question.
To be completely transparent, was based on. Um, a reasonable and achievable number that our team felt they could. Um, measure and work reports for that safe and healthy schools goal. So thinking about five percent increase in attendance and a five percent decrease in number of. What are called major behaviors? Was something that we all felt like we had the data, we can be able to measure that. Across more. The, the, the kind of acceleration, I think last year was that we were actually using data. To come up with those goals.
That's good.
And that was really good. And I think it'd be something that we were, I'll speak for, I'm looking at our team, but we're glad to be able to do that.
And then did the state testing that the kids took last year, when will that come out?
They keep saying they need the folks at the state. No, no. We, yeah. Um. December.
And that's the last round of testing last year. Yeah. And I'm hoping they report different than because the parent reports that we're at home. Yeah, so parents got more information than teachers did.
It's not super usable.
Yeah, it, it doesn't conform with school instruction.
Yeah.
It was interesting. I found that interesting. I can see.
I think as a parent, I found it interesting as well.
Yeah.
Um, and I do either.
Right.
So I guess you have a discern from last year to this year, if we've seen. If you've.
No, we have not. No, not at the end.
Yeah.
And then SWP, every year that I've been here has been built off of data. What we've been determining with, oh, it's worked on a rating program. And intentionally doing intensive, very intensive PD work to bring alignment across all of the, all the K to E. Um, so that we have that in, similarly with bringing in a finance program. And that years later, now seeing the, now the kids have been seeing the same exact things, the same exact language is being used across grade levels. Teachers are seeing that, which is what we would want and we're seeing that in global.
Any other thoughts? Okay, David.
Every four or five years, there's a new and improved system comes out. And it always is. And it's, no, no, that's, we're going to fix it with this new program. And then it would be nice to see that there are improvements. Some of these numbers are not acceptable. What makes this mousetrap better than all the rest of the tribe? And fail.
Are you talking about the rating program that we're implementing?
The proficiency. That is this number right here.
Yeah, we're just not bringing it. Not looking at the same thing you are.
Oh, and your schoolwide plan that in some areas. We can get like a lot of math and using this measure STAR data and VT cap. Yep, so that's why we're doing all, I think like Sarah said, all of the, the, the things we're doing. As far as making sure that using assessment information in a conversation team, teachers. And it's strategizing about what we're doing to improve that teaching.
And I think, not so much the rating program, but. I was hired. I was hired and exactly I had structural focus of the building administrator. I was hired here and this is the principal, it's not a typical job for one person. Who's instructional and support for three year olds to eighteen year olds. And so we made that shift. Medium working with those changes. Where if it doesn't happen, if you've seen it, it's definitely an improvement since I started. Uh, the difficulty. Very specifically is that the focus was all on the high school. And then, and when, when they get to high school, they're still struggling to read. The opportunity to teach those foundational skills has been lost. And so really the last five years, I moved the time with COVID. Shifting rather, putting that COVID being very intentional, training in the moment if the teachers to support our kids at that level. And then you're seeing half pay obviously. But that's, I mean, like very transparent, it was, it was a missing ball. For Danville, they didn't. We haven't had a perfect performance I've been here, so we've harvested out in pieces.
It may not have been a unified poll, mother.
Not really unified.
We've done, we've done a lot with the teachers and asked a lot of them. And they have stepped up and risen to that challenge. We're seeing that pay a lot of our kids.
Yeah, and I just wanted to say to you that when I'm thinking about the schoolwide plan and those two measures that were used. The data that we have to be able to look at. I'm really hopeful that. Probably not this year, but next year, when we're making this boy planning, we're going to have a really different picture in front of us to look at for data. Because we'll be able to collect a lot more than just those two sources to make a clearer picture of student. Like that relative proficiency. And that is what.
We haven't had the data, it sounds like for K two, and now we're requiring, which is one thing. If we don't have kids, Dave, if you don't have kids on being able to be on grade level successive by the end of third grade. Seventy six and out, there's a chance there will be. Uh, so we really want to make sure that we have a system built in place, assessment wise, with that annual assessment system that we can find out, identify those kids who are in that red right away. In the fall, we go, guess what we're doing? We're going to be able to give this kid extra time, extra support, and they're going to monitor them, you know, progress monitor to see if they've had that extra, that adequate progresses. Des was saying, if this is proficient, are they doing this? Well, we may need them to do this. And we want to have assessments that are sensitive enough to be able to measure, are they making that increase versus opposed to just yearly adequate? So that's something we're starting to be able to, that's in the pipeline for us to be able to do. And I've been in systems where we've been able to do that in the past.
So we're going to get a state average. Eventually.
Do you say state average?
I compared it, this is a state average.
I mean, a different test.
Yeah.
The VT cap.
Comparable schools, um, Kane and Ireland and then.
So not every school is going to do, you're asking a great question. Not every school does the smarter balance. But what we can do is you're asking for, you'd rather have an apple to apple comparison. So if there are schools that have slower demographic, that would be the ones you would compare to. Don't know how you need that to be together.
It's super easy to get that.
The state data.
Look at VT cap.
Right.
VT cap, right.
And they do in the territory that we got, they're really nice. They showed you the S U, I assumed it was the S U level, the district level. And that was, as a parent, I think that's why what you're talking about, Dave, is how you compare, how do we compare to the other CSU.
It's a non-shot that comes out. Yeah. But that's just for VT cap.
Right.
Here's one thing that I have not been able to see STAR do for a share, which I was a different stuff, that's just a student. I can actually look to see what they hit efficiency or not. But I can see, did they accelerate and were they learning more than a typical student would? And that's a lot to ask them. If you've got a student that started down here, wanting to get here. If I've got, you know, a child here, that's not too tough. But if I've got a kid that's done so much better than that. Exactly, right?
I like this. You can see that.
Because it's not, it's not going to be easy for me to identify that yet. So that's. That's good because that data is more workable to us as a system, I think. And then the final, hey, here's all the kids, snapshot in time with VT cap for assessments, they leave it once a year and they're kind of like already at the end of the year. They've also done three other assessments. We really hit the kids with a lot of assessments at the end of the year. VT cap is one of them. It's not very useful data for us. It's mostly a graduation exam or something like that, but it's not helping us in the instructional piece yet. Because that's so late, late data.
I, I do want to be very cautious here. So there is data that you can use to support about instructional, there is data that you can use to assess how things are going. And also making good decisions about resources. And those might be two different things to say. And those might be two different uses of that data. For example, if, uh, if I'm, if I own a solar farm. Um, what I do today, I don't know exactly how much output it's getting. I'll take a look at seller pictures, I'll get the clouds to go over. I figure out exactly how much radiance is going down there at the given time. If I try to do that for all of Texas and do every solar farm, had all that up, you're actually going to be more wrong. Than if I take a, why have you used input my letters and go from there? So I just, I do want to, to, to say that like, a lot of the things I hear about data, everything gets caveat as, oh, this is useless, this is useless. Maybe.
Maybe not.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that we, that we understand.
I don't think, yeah, I think the difficulty with VT cap is that there's no no VT cap to the teachers. They know the name VT cap to delve down into the. I can see, yeah, I can see that, you know, my boss got this many, this many more. That's.
But it is public facing.
Right.
And I think to your point, and to your point too, Dave, and to what we're trying to do. It's kind of like, we're working with evidence of student learning, information that we're getting from kids every day, every month, two times a year. Right? And this is VT cap. And we're working on how to provide best instruction for kids. And making sure to, you know, teachers to be like. Are you doing any possible every day, maybe just mentoring and, and supporting the students? Looking at the data. How are you doing any possible every day for students? Looking at that. So eventually, what would kind of be projected, it is. So eventually what would kind of be projected, it is BT caps for the end of the year. And working on that student engagement, like kids want to be in school. Will go up, right? They see, you know, an improvement. Because if you're learning more and seeing that growth, then when you sit down to enter your test. It's a snap, right? And something that you'll be able to face the challenge, you do that. So I think it's not unusual. It's just not unusual right now really. But it does, it's, it's something you can ignore. Like, I totally get that.
For the board, to the resource allocation piece is huge. That Eric said, I think for us to articulate to the community. Yes. When we hear, well, look at our scores, what are you guys doing? You know, and I think for us just to have a simple, clear um explanation about what, kind of what are we getting for the resources that we're putting out? You know, how many of those kids are IEPs and all the pairs that we use? How are those kids dating and what, you know, I think that's, you know, I think, how are we making sure kids are challenged? If it's this X amount of kids, um, yeah, it's hard. It's, I think that being able to articulate that with topping points for the board, I think would be useful using some of this data. But this is great. I really appreciate it.
And first, first go and I, um, we can have any of that.
So one thing that's meaning is to have, have the kids to increase it. You've got to, this is. Now you're going to be fed and you're going to have a better chance of here being intervened on. If it is here, and so a good goal for, for your plan to improve, try to get them all in the field.
And whether that's fixing up how, you know, nurse office, the uniform nurse office and all those policies are there. They're in the building, get a better chance of making your plans accessible for to intervene on.
Our plan. And I think it's also, it's also to, to, you know, thinking about like new cooking teacher that I got to meet. Uh, uh, new teacher orientation, James Corless. And John, oh, get it. Yeah. But those kinds of opportunities are also bringing kids back. But you know, it's the knowing that I'm in a cooking class that day and a way to apply and, and, and other things as well. But that's part of the job as ten, as a big teacher is, you know, if you can get them to come back and get them to engage.
Just one more, one more thing. Molly was saying, first, I mean, when we're looking at data, your guys' job and role and the board is to be able to evaluate how we're doing. So thinking about those goals, these plans, they guide our, they guide our product construction, they guide our processes. And we need to show them to you guys, let you guys know what we're working on and you can be able to say, okay, how did you do? This is the data that helps us be able to communicate, but for you guys to be able to communicate to the community. Hey, this is what they're working on. This is how they allocate resources. You can look at the budget. Here's what we did. Whether it's through SFR or whatever, federal funding, state funding, local funding. And this is what funded those programs. And here's the change in federal tech. We were looking at those line graph, those bar graphs, you know, those red areas. Couple of years, the red area got smaller as you went across. That's great because it was yellow, which means they were doing better, right? And then you had some others, which is the blue and the green, right?
The green went down.
They were close. I mean, that's be rolled down. Through a program evaluation over a three-year period, I'll start to look over the type of trends. And I, but I, you know, one year snapshot, I'm not, but from a macro, I'm starting to go those. As we start our line system. So when you go to Peach and Bear, you go to the end of it, where you go to Cabot. Equity land, everybody has the same opportunities to learn. We're using very similar systems. We're using same type of staff development. We're using same systems to actually assess.
I speak for me and I would love to see more. Um, I can do that. You get any data and I mean, I've never seen that before.
Well, I was going to say, we can even talk about, I mean, three times a year is the benchmark. So whether it's, for instance, want to put that information out in their report three times a year. Or if those times you want her to, you know, Des to come in and support that.
We have to caveat, analyze the data. We just get the data, we get the data and we just, it gets presented to us. So.
Sure.
Yeah.
You guys can ask all the questions. And I share with you, you know, we want to present the data to you in advance. So if you guys have questions, you guys want to develop, send to us. So that way, Des, Sarah, Natalie have a chance to be able to find what it is that you guys have been looking for and be able to answer it for you.
Sure. Yeah.
Yeah, that's all. And then do that when you get, instead of getting like two days before the meeting.
We need to agree. So here's the other thing, that young lady over there was sick last week and we were wanting to have that out to you a lot sooner. So we, we were happy we got it there, but.
That's what I've had. During the meeting. So a lot when we got it during the meeting.
I think we all agree. So if you develop the processes, you guys, everybody needs it sooner. That way you guys have time to reflect on and get those questions out to us.
So, so I guess one, one final thought here is, um, the state had their, um, their assessment, their profile that they released on Friday. This is, this is, this is the most important graph in here. And I think it's, so my goal is that we can outkick our coverage. But essentially what this graph is saying is how well you're going to do on ELA or not.
Sure.
Is based on how few. That's the strongest relation. It's the one.
Same thing in Illinois. Same thing in Illinois.
It's, it's the same process in so far as I was at the top. So I guess that's, these questions that I have is just hanging back. How are we going to outkick the coverage?
I think that's what we're trying to do right now is to be able to have that actual data in. I always say, I always say team talk is that. They're going to write now because I always say, I've called it, I come from so many different discourses where it's been instructional decision teams.
Yeah, yeah, TTT.
All right, TTT is fair. Team, we're actually having some little process there, procedure that the teachers are utilizing, like having the same process over and over again. And then have a chart from the side, keep practicing over and over again, develop that skill, be able to do that data, making decisions. And just as a four steps that Des had up there, the process of the one through two, that's team talk. And we'll be able to monitor closely and if we find that we're not having assessments and the instruction we need. Because the data might tell us that and we might need to change, but hopefully it's not the better mouse graph. It's more focused. I think that, that was recently with, um, we were discussing awareness of that nature of the younger kids. And one of the programs that we're purchasing is filling an academic hole for some of the skills that the kids are not getting at that kind of two level. Does that sound right, Des?
Yeah. Yeah.
We found a hole there, we filled it with.
And the more we start using data and really using data, data literate, it's a whole, you just have to teach us. The more specific, the more specific power on earth sense as well. And that's kind of a problem.
You want to make it as possible as possible.
All right, all right. That was good. So we have next, um, when they went on a one, I mean, I'm not sure. Creation of a board policy here. And Natalie, tell us why this is on the agenda.
Yeah. So Nadia Hale is our, I know Costa Rica, hopefully. Uh, Nadia Hale's our high school Spanish teacher. We're also doing little school Spanish this year. And she was communicating with Education First EF about taking kids out of the country for a language, a language immersion trip. And so, um, she approached me and some whole bunch of the details, but it was at the end of last year before we had our new superintendent. Our former superintendent didn't want to do a, you know, big commitment and then, you know, hand it over to somebody. So, right? Yeah. Here you go. Um, and so when I approached it, um, with Matt, he was asking if we had any policies or what was.
I think I said, go look at policies.
There is none. So we don't have, um, really any established procedures or policies around fundraising for these kinds of trips. Because they're thousands of dollars per student. Um, and I don't know that international outside of popping over the border to Canada to visit a school, maybe. Um, having a instructor do that. So sort of a hundred percent in territory for a dance school. Way back in the ancient days. Way back, I think my husband may have gone some of their group days. And I think it's more like wherever comes along and.
Yeah.
Yeah. And so I think just pursuing this for, for our students, just doing it as effectively as possible and not having to be something that is cost-effective. For kids, but obviously, yeah, funding is what it's taken out to. So.
Do you, as yet, I mean, how many students or what the cost would be? Anything, any of that?
One of those details not on me today, but it's, uh, when I last talked to the EF rep, it was about three grand per kid. For a week, ten days to go. Um, so it would be over like February break or spring break or possibly December. Um, and the cost fluctuates over time. So. Yeah, depends on when it, like honestly, you'd be purchasing now for a year from now. So you purchase way out in advance with that. Um, we could take these kids as we wanted. Kids don't know how many, it's realistic for us to afford to take, like how much, how much we could fundraise to.
How many kids are Spanish enough to get something out of a trip?
Advance to probably have about a dozen or less. Yeah. So not many. Spanish one is huge this year, but.
You get a lot more than language immersion. That's a trip.
A program in the more recent years, we have a program that fundraised, like a total fundraiser fundraised enough money to go on an international trip.
Well, I say that to be a big, yeah, we, we couldn't be individually targeting this student, but then I wouldn't think that would be an act.
There was a group that could brain raise. I think that would be the way to do it. If they organized and did some fundraising and fundraisers, that might be, I think that's what other big people mountain did to make it work. Like to try to track that down. Yeah. Cause it doesn't sound like any other schools in the SU have recently at least.
Yeah.
And it's all about all new admins.
Yeah.
But I, I looked at the procedure and things that nature of it is really just one from OSS, she, they said for a trip that was going to go across borders. It was let the board know in advance. That was kind of like the standard, just to say, we're looking at doing this. So we're looking at your in advance. And I, I would even say six months would be fairly appropriate for you guys to have that. So I think I would suggest us create a procedure that take OSS, change in time scales, but that's, should work. I think the other piece, this would be the fundraising piece, but you're right, you're right.
Yeah.
I failed to look to see if you have a fundraising policy. Do we have a fundraising policy?
No.
We took it to a lot of it.
So. Since we're talking about the policy, would you want to bring us a policy now so that we can place.
Is that our fundraising?
No.
International trips, I think a procedure at this point would work. I think, I think that's such an infrequent thing. Whereas I think fundraising policy, probably, I'd like to do a little investigation, see if that's something that's appropriate for us.
I think the fundraising policy, there's a lot of. With, with, there's a lot of grassroots things that happen for small, for small things, that definitely put a policy in place.
I hope I don't. That's why I would like to look into it.
Sure.
I just don't want our kids to ever be taken advantage of doing particular fundraising. I know there's some organizations out there that, some schools will say, okay, you can do a fundraiser, but you can't have a fundraiser that encourages kids to hit a certain level so then to get a prize and stuff like that. So just saying, there's things out there that we think that would, the, the interest would try and protect the kid.
Yeah. My, my concern with this is just, you know, say Spanish two or Spanish three, those classes and those kids work to fundraise them. And we get enough money for half of them to go. Does nobody go? What do we do with that money? Who goes? Like, yeah, just getting caught in that rock and a hard place.
The other nice thing is that you're also, we have time to build a budget too. So what you could say is that we'd like, if the board wanted to be that big, say, we're willing to put X number of dollars towards this trip. For it to happen. I'm just thinking, as you said, Crasberry did that.
I don't think that's that quick.
Yeah, no, I'm just, uh, but I do, and I think that Crasberry is for entire grade levels.
Right, right. Um, the other part of that too is, um, so they used to travel every year out of Spalding. I don't know if they still do. They used to take trips every year. Um, and then they would do, they would keep track of every fundraiser and who attended. And they divided the money based on the students who attended. And basically at the end, you were sort of told, this is how much you still owe.
Right.
If you didn't reach your, if you didn't reach your limit and there was refunds. And so that was, that's how they kept track of that part, figuring out who ended up going. So you weren't sort of trying to divide it.
This is what we would, that's what we would, you work this here, you got a share. So you'd be raised a thousand dollars or five million. You get your two hundred dollars. And then it's, you can literally do the fundraiser, do the fundraiser if you want. And then you're right to take care of it. Or not, not you up.
Look, here we go.
And so, and some, some kids were like, oh, our parents was just pretty old, great, right? And they checked out two thousand dollars.
I think you also though end up with kids who don't show up.
Because they cannot. You're, you're.
And that, and that was always going to be the case. How can you get funded? Half the force. We had done a nation. It was like, um, if, 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 if you didn't even money, then they just, you know, it was the reason why. Or you know that a certain situation happened and, and people in the community would, um, would pay people, you know. This is what that needs. Um, and you can see that in nineteen eighty-three, Chris Manson and I went to, uh, went to, uh.
I was three.
My brother was born. I remember that day.
So you might not remember this. Chris Manson and I, uh, were part of a group that we went to seven European countries. Uh, it was with a, it was with a, um, a, a, a course and stuff like that. Just the, you know, the things to learn by, by being in the spirit of the, at the American Misty on the Fourth of July and stuff like that. Crazy time around us. Um, so I'm in full support of international trips. Ten, eleven, twelve years ago. Um, when we toured, um, the school board provided by Mr. Lovett. And we toured their programs and stuff like that. There was this discussion about between, you know, if there was so many positions. They, they're international, you know, um, just that program is fantastic. So maybe even looking for something that, policies that they have in place. Because they're, they're our neighbors. Um, and if it's possible, we could. Let's say it's probably, um, be part of the era, you know, we're, we'd have our own group here. But be part of the, the whole and.
EF does that automatically. Yep. So like say we've got ten kids, but like to fill a boss or to fill out a trip that you need thirty, they just get you in another school. And you're still doing your own trip with your own people, but you're, it's actually cheaper to do it that way. Yeah.
Because, you know, we saw, we saw that the, um, with the academy, absolutely fantastic. They really have. They, they probably have every question we possibly think of.
So I think that if you're going to talk to education first, it's hard way. And then they can probably bring questions that we. Natalie, it sounds like you've got the go ahead, that you'd be allowed. Yeah, they're not opposed to going. It sounds like you're trying to work through fundraising case and how you want to work through that.
Maybe I'll start next, even just having Nadia pull the parents of the kids who are enrolled in Spanish now and to see like if there's an interest. So how many parents like, no, thank you. You know, anyways, maybe we're not thinking of this big.
Right. Forget that.
Well, what language? What language?
They like to get.
All right. To, to that end, do we not do anything with the fact that we're forty miles from Quebec? And in the first language.
We did use to, um, and up until last, when Nadia was hired, we had French, Spanish, Italian, because we had a triilingual teacher.
Inside my release.
Um, but that doesn't. We looked very hard. So, um, Dave and I, Dave and I looked really hard to try, try to find somebody that was, um.
Right, we don't have to position.
We don't have to position yet. Somebody that is fluent in Spanish and we're just having to know one. Um, I'm looking to have a teacher.
It's easier to go with French, Spanish and French anyway.
It's easy to go with French, Spanish, and French anyway, but, uh, yeah, okay, it was just, it's, it's like.
Seems really obvious.
Really.
They did use to double to Quebec, up to Montreal and stuff, but I, I, right, but I know that I did, but not even in the last few years, not even. We also have two years of lockdown, or that, so. My, my fear.
Now, that one's. That's, okay.
Okay, so no policy needed at this time, but I'll keep you.
Keep.
So, yeah, you, you, set that for a report from, because there's more to be progress on this one. Yeah, and just let, it, it, it can come back to a meeting if you need us to do anything, or you want.
I'll keep you updated.
Keep you updated. So there's a superintendent.
I think, I'm.
We can next week.
If you ask, uh, there are people that will give money towards this, that might not give money towards other programs and stuff like that, and if you ask, right, just like, hey, I. You know, I was a Spanish teacher, or, well, my parents were, whatever, um.
Give a grant or something.
Don't start asking how much money you need in order to. All right, so let's move on from this, and, um, not to break the case short, and the board policy, and we're going to go down to the Daniel policy slash student handling. On hazing, harassment, bullying, and self-help policy. And before we start, the Daniel handbook is managed by. Daniel handbook is a communication with parents and with students about how our policies are enacted, this is, if we had our previous superintendent. He would tell us large T P policies, small policy right now, but the board inform, board acceptable policies and board informed policies, but the board does it in the handbook. If the handbook is a communication that might need tweaking by the. And the reason this came up, Eric had asked about the hazing, harassment, bullying policy, and Molly said at the same time, what can we have some clarity on? How we are, um, working with our own self-help policy, and how is it, and how do you support, so, right, like, these are, both of these are. Um, the self-help policy, and interest your school, not herself, so, that was pretty, that was pretty simple, so this is.
Have it out, but you can't.
We, we, we're not going through that, can't, we're not going through that, right.
Is this all electronics, like Nintendo Switches, and that's more, I think, the younger kids, they tend to have their little games, and is that?
Not during the school day, and we're not responsible for it, so they're not, they're not supposed to have it, but some people bring it, like, on their, on the bus, or.
Sometimes they think. Sometimes they think.
Right.
That's where we do.
Yeah, or if they're, they dropped off at seven thirty in the morning, they do, some of them do have cell phones.
So for the self-help policy, on that, no self-help policy, in that scenario, if a fourth grader got out of cell phone, would it be compensated as if it would be in the middle class?
No, I mean, it's true, I know, I mean, I, I know what I would expect, but it's, it's not really, I would say like fifth or sixth grade is really where we see it, and we would, we would tell them to go put it in their backpacks, it would be compensated if it becomes an issue.
I think the problem, the problem with the phones is that they become more pervasive, and they're more ubiquitous, and now third grade. So, that's what I, that's what I mean, and they know not to get out, because they don't, you push your face in it.
I mean, some teachers will, will take it, like, even on their desk for the, for the rest of the day, um, but most of the time, they're asked to put it in their backpacks.
So I think that's.
By students or teachers need to remember.
Okay, so, yeah, there's a policy in place to keep the phone out. Underneath the middle school.
Those schools will take someone out after one second.
Yeah, so in middle school, it's, we say bell to bell, like, no matter the bells, so if fifteen to three, the cell phones are in lockers, gone, um, the whole day for middle school. In high school, cell phones are, um, allowed on their person, but now every teacher has the same cell phone policy. So last year, every teacher had their own cell phone policy, and the handbook said, just refer to your teacher's policy, if you don't know what it is, assume that it's no cell phones. Um, and so this year, the one step we've taken is that all the classroom teachers have the same policy, and that is no phones in our class. Right now, we're working with the high school math teachers around that, because kids use their phones as calculators.
Interesting, that's the same issue we had at Craftberry.
And TI eighty-four still costs a hundred dollars, and TI eighty-four is are still what we're using in twenty twenty-four. Um, I know.
It costs a hundred dollars, so you think they go down.
It's no sense to me, so Texas.
So, don't they all have Chromebooks?
Well, that's, they do have Chromebooks, and. And it does most, as a, as a free app to use for graphing and that sort of thing, um, it's more利于 for teachers to, to know the functionality of a TI eighty-four. Versus new technology on the computers, um, another, yeah, there, teachers want pictures of the kids' work to be uploaded onto Google Classroom. And seeing paper and pencil work, um, no matter how good the Chromebook is, the Chromebook camera is just never super great. So, we're working on different ways we can do that, whether we buy a document camera, the kids are just scanning their work in that way.
Fantastic.
Yeah, or teachers doing something else, so, there's, there's been very little pushback from the adults on the cell phone. Or, no, I mean, so the, the teaching staff have, have not really pushed back on it, um, it's learning curve for the kids, week, you know, the honeymoon period's over, last week was last week, and we're in school for real. Um, so we're seeing them pop up a bit more, but, um, I, I think this is a good for this year, next step, and then in the future, um, throughout this year, in the future. I want to start polling our community, our board, kids and parents on, on what it is they want to see happen, and specifically at high school. Around cell phones, I think it's a big ask to completely take them on them, and I don't know that we want to spend our energy chasing, chasing that. Um, I think, I, in my research, my reading, and listening to podcasts and whatnot, I think a balanced approach makes more sense, where we're saying. These are the spaces in town when you're not using them compared face to face with people right now, when you're doing things that require you to be present and thoughtful, and it doesn't, like, picking that up is disrespectful, not appropriate right now. Um, that said, it is very real that they do have a frontal lobe development and a self-control adolescence to not look at that. If this is being nearby on them, even if it's silenced them off as a, as a psychological distraction, and so. I think that's, that's really hard to come, combat, and we don't know where our community stands on it yet, because we haven't polled them, but we had a leadership team group that. Did multiple surveys to send out, so we'll send those out this year, for just to see how parents feel as well, but, I mean, we have parents who are texting their kids, and that's why their kids are getting in trouble with their cell phone. Oh, mom wanted to know if I was on the bus today, it's like, ah, okay, text her, and class is over, you know, and that's hard for a kid to, to wait.
Yeah, and when you're on the bus, I'll give you. Some of the, you text, you forgot your shoes, you need your shoes, and then, you, you, Cassie, if you think you're, you're naked.
There's a social skill, I guess, I have no opinions about this, but there's a social skill to having to go ask Cassie to, and have those adult interactions, and I think. It's just interesting to me that, you know, the research with mental health and cell phones, and then we're educators. Seems like I should be promoting, you know, the same sort of message, um, is where I was coming with it, you know. Not saying I'm for a whole band, I think you're doing a fantastic job with it, but just in terms of what, what we now know. Based on some research, and, um, what we're promoting, and what we're teaching kids in terms of, I like, like, the idea of helping them understand when it's appropriate. To actually, you're in a group, you're putting it down, and you're, you know, what that message sends to somebody else who's with you, um, you know, what it feels like.
Doesn't fly in the real world, you know, you're working at K C, and you're on your phone, you're getting fired, right, so, there are real world implications to not being able to put it down, or.
That being said, this is the same conversation that's taking place at Twinfield right now, and it's a big, um. Point of conversation at the board level with regards to whether or not cell phones should be banned, things of that nature. Uh, they're looking at L S S U, which recently went through this process, and they did a survey in the community to see, and there was an eighty percent response rate of being for a ban of some sort. Um, I'll be sending out a climate survey to D S U within the next month, and.
Intern.
I'm sorry.
My climate.
Internally, to, where I see some families, everybody, anybody, I'm not sending it to, um, all taxpayers, I'm sending to anybody that's in the, any family.
Yeah, yeah. Which, that's.
You got it.
That's the thing with the school.
Right, so as I'm sending that out, I'm, I'm curating questions, I'm trying to decide whether or not to, I, I think it'd probably be an easy ask, I gotta look at what question would be the best way to ask it about. Cell phones, I might reach out to L S S U and see what their survey was in particular, um, see how they did it, yeah, and I'll, I'll do that. Climate survey probably, uh, fall and spring, just like benchmark assessment.
And I have some, you know, you're around, some decisions, there's some data. And, you know, their decisions, their decisions, and ours will be ours, and.
Exactly.
Why follow?
And I'll just have information for us to be able to look at.
And, yeah, that's, that's, current, that would make the main question, is current, do you have enough of this, and do you think to cut out a handle?
Hundred percent, yeah, right, like, we, and we need to do more as a board, for you all, we feel like it's good.
No, I think.
I think, I think having been here longer, I think having teachers, middle school was a really tight policy, and it's been, it's been fine, just being right now. High school has been so loose and so teacher dependent, even just tightening up that one component. From somebody who doesn't live in the high school world, I just hear, I just hear things, has been really good, um, I think that's been a fantastic, easy, simple step.
Yeah, and not like shocking.
No, right.
Okay, good, good, any other questions about cell policy? I'm moving over to, same, the same, hazing, harassment, bullying policies, inform the annual policy to go to families, and.
Question about some of this stuff handled, and I was hoping to talk to that one.
And then, and before you, before you say, a lot of the, um, confidential, we actually. Because a lot of the things that happen to students with discipline, and with discipline based on, cannot be shared, and so whatever. All right.
Yeah, right, which makes people unhappy.
And, and this is always, how was the bully of my child, please tell me.
But I think, I think to answer that, I think it comes back to the relationships that we, we build, I think having, having some longevity in administration here, and having that. Consistent approach, it doesn't mean that we're perfect, but building that trust in the school that is being addressed, I'm under, you know, and I, I think we see way less of that in happiness. When they don't get to know, um, not, never, that wouldn't be true, but, I think, I, I, I don't think you see, you guys might hear it in the community, and that's fine, but it doesn't, that doesn't hold you back.
The other thing to, to know is that not all behavior, even if it's, um, even if I open an investigation, or I start an investigation for, under the H H B violation, doesn't mean that. The end of it, it was an H H B violation, but it sure took a lot of paperwork, time, manpower, conversations, and effort, um, so.
Would you like to frame just how much time it does take, I mean, we have nine hours of training.
That, that's one of the things Natalie and I talked about.
So, I think that's good, just frame a reference, because there's like that, that gate, is this enough for us to decide to open investigations, here's the situation, you might. Do a little talk, scratch it a little bit, and.
Year, two years ago.
And then, all right, I think I'm going to start this investigation, we'll undo a quick little synopsis of how that process.
I think we calculated it, and between H H B and Title Nine, I probably spent a month. Before I got off here. Job, like, at least one tenth.
And with that being said, there are S U's out there that actually hire people to do H H B investigations because of that impact.
Yeah, so it's a lot, and that's why sometimes.
Unfunded mandate, right?
If it doesn't.
An appropriate thing for us to do, but it's just.
Yeah, yeah, and that's why sometimes I think, uh, public perception, when isn't, uh, harassment, or isn't technically meeting the criteria for bullying. Um, doesn't mean nothing happens, but like, you've just did all this paperwork, and I spent all this time communicating with you as a parent, and then I'm like, oh, okay, well, it actually didn't. Meet that criteria, but please know we're taking this seriously, and I still can't tell you what happened to the other kid who was mean to your kid.
Can you say, can you say, didn't? Just explain what that in specific, you don't, the next phone call is not a mandatory one, then the next, there's not a mandatory actual stop here.
Right, right, so.
There's a serious.
I mean, when we're talking about things like beyond, and hazing, to be clear, isn't, uh, we have not seen it here, so we hope to continue to not see that, that is not, it's part of hazing, harassment, bullying, which is one big.
Yeah. Policy, but we have not seen.
Yeah, so the five people that are trained, I mean, it is nothing to spend fifteen plus hours and not even be, meet the criteria for bullying and harassment investigation. And so, when you're looking at it, it needs to be held out, it's, um, it is, it's on page thirty-seven. Yeah, C C S U policy, um, it comes with a lawyer, um, for the whole. It's not, it's something that we can edit and then change, the only thing we change is who the adults are.
Like, the CliffsNotes version, bullying, um, isn't just one incident of being mean, it could be one really big bad incident, that could be bullying.
When I was first.
Yeah.
Policy change, hopefully, as they say, one is. I'm not told it, it's not legal. Right, change back, so.
One, it's one significant, but it, like, but when they're talking significant, they're talking.
Systemic.
Hmm.
Sure, several times.
Talking about like a situation where a high schooler. Times.
Yeah, that would be one that's a, yeah, that was a thing. Um, gender bullying is incidents repeated over time, um, and like the policy says, written verbal or electronic communication, or physical act, or gesture, or any combination thereof, directed at another. Pupil, which harms that pupil, pupil, damages their property, causes emotional distress, interferes with their educational opportunity, creates a hostile education environment, that's a huge component of it. And substantially disrupts the orderly operation of the school, so that's all bullying, and then harassment, you want to think of it as sort of the same, except protected category. So, you know, your, uh, gender, sex, sexual orientation, race, religion, create all of that, so, you're talking about a protected category then, and we're looking at harassment as opposed to bullying. And those require just different procedures.
Yeah, and I think one of the important pieces of being repeated over time is that it also has to be like reported, uh, so, i- it's, and that gets really tricky, and that's, we've got to flush that out, like, that's part of. We, these are never done in isolation with just one person, and so, you could, as a parent, and say, this has happened to my child over time. And we will still hope to address it a hundred percent, but we've got to know that, got to be able to prove it, and then part of, after this, through those pieces, say, oh, yes, is harassment or bullying. Then you've got investigation, we've literally become police detectives trying to talk to people to figure out, have not, uh, uh, she said, she said, he said, he said, the type of situation, because. Then you, how do you know, like, child A isn't targeted, child B, right, first, and so, having, be able to be associated with.
So like, we tell kids, if you're telling me someone sent you a snap, and it was inappropriate, or it was bullying, then take a screenshot of it, you know, like, you got to show me a screenshot, you got to email me the text messages you say you're getting. In or out of school, doesn't matter when it happens, if it's affecting school, it's affecting school, um, and that's the hard part, you know.
And I think one of the things that we say then to parents is that it's not that we're not following up, just because it's not believing, or harassment, we still do. Frankly, a lot of the same things as our follow-up to support both kids or groups of kids, it's just the paperwork and the legal law. Legal depth, there is, that's, it's just that it's respectful.
Right, and just because it may not hit that super high threshold, as I mean, they've broken something in the handbook, that broke a rule, and they still would have received discipline or something else, it just may not be at that standard of H H B or D.
It sounds like a lot of the time is spent with a parent calling and all of it, trying to investigate, and this sounds so simple, but even as a parent. On, on my website, if there was like, your child has experienced this, like, yes, kind of would walk you through, just so you are clear about, I'd be like, oh, okay, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna actually. Submit whatever work, because this really falls in this category, I think if there's more education to parents about, I think, when it's happening to your child, you're like, oh my gosh, and this is horrible, and.
Very personal.
But to put it in the perspective of what really these categories are for parents, so then they go, maybe that eliminates some of the, like, the parent education part might eliminate some of that time, because that's. If they're all going to, from those five people, to determine whether it's some.
The parent compensation, honestly, is the least bit, and I think, I think they're a vital component of building the relationship, so while I like that, I absolutely agree that parent education, that everything. So while I like that, I absolutely agree that parent education, that everything is bullying.
And that's one of the thing, or numbers where if somebody comes to you and says, can I tell you what happened to my child in this situation?
And the other part of that is what often happens with parents is they are told one day that something happens, they're told one day that something happens, they're told one day that something happens. But they don't say anything and then they wait a while and go, this has been happening to my child. The education part is to have a parent who just sends an email that says, just so you know, my, my child said this happened today. And you send it and you just let it go out into the ether. Um, so that when it happens the next day, they can say, just so you know, this happened today. And there's a paper trail. That's the part that parents are missing. I also don't know. I, you know, I, a, a lot of times those conversations are happening with, are happening with the students. So if the parents ask their kid, they can be like, oh, actually that's what counts as bullying. Uh, because a lot of, a lot of education happens on the students around what that is. And how would they differ?
In my head at all that bullying has a legal definition?
Like directly with the lawyer as we communicate, it's.
It becomes a required policy.
So it's a reserved word.
Yeah. And it gets reported to the state. So not every like mean kid incident gets reported to the state. But every hazing, harassment, bullying or Title Nine violation does get reported.
So that's something I think that's very different from what I was in my school. So bullying is very much a reserved word. And I think that it is important if we have a shared vocabulary, because I think a lot of folks out there have no idea, aren't in this space and use it wrongly and, and don't have that understanding that it is a reserved word. You know, not a kid being mean, bullying, well, who cares? Like, yeah.
To a certain extent, like your parent doesn't care. But that's okay. You don't need to.
Because if you don't know that bullying is a reserved word, like who cares if it's bullying or if it's just the kid being mean.
Yeah. I mean, the training that we do, like all of us have done several times and all run by a lawyer. It's like tick all these boxes.
If not this, then this.
Sex-based discrimination versus sexual discrimination, sex-based harassment versus sexual harassment. I did not get a degree in law and so I just call our Title Nine coordinator and talk to them.
And again, there's a reason that school districts have, some school districts that are larger would just have a person who just does hazing, harassment and bullying investigations. And the paperwork. So like some.
Cause it is a day killer.
Some school districts have multiples because they have one for every.
And then the other piece that we didn't say is that there's also a timeline. So you receive a report. You have twenty-four hours to decide whether or not it actually meets the criteria. So then there's this like level of investigation within that, you know, first school day, basically rushed to try to figure out, then you have to decide, then you have to decide.
Even if you didn't hit that target, you gotta fill out paperwork saying why you didn't hit it.
Right. And it meets whether or not it meets the plus, it's.
Then you have five days after that twenty-four, then you've got five days to do the investigation, come up with a, a finding. And then if there's the point during that five days, you can't meet that timeline, you send out another letter to the family saying, here's the reasons why I was not able to hit this timeline. Because the person was absent, whatever. It extends the investigation and the entire time they're still trying to run school.
I mean.
Certified bail.
I think it's important. Cause they need to feel safe in their school. The, the hard part is, and I, I, the lawyer allows it. She sees the legal side of what happens when these things go to court and not the reality of how that'll play out in school. So we make it work.
I, 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 I don't know if this is happening, maybe. One of the things that sort of, as you, you're off the top, something like that. You end up catching a lot of the really severe cases in curbing law roles, but what you've missed is the slow drip. Um, because it never rises to the level to be thresholds or whatever the case might be. Like how, how do we, how do we handle and how do we handle like the, um, sort of that type of slow drip, uh, just being mean, I guess, or, or that like the, the, the classic, uh,
Right. Goes back to the social, emotional learning.
Creating an environment where everybody's on the same page in the building and make sure the class is functioning. And this is, this is just so literally exactly what we were talking about earlier. We get some other guys just angry and maybe catch it at the fourth time and then you start.
And we don't do it by ourselves. We have three incredible people who are really dedicated to the holistic success of our kids. Um, that helps to support that. And they're that first line of defense that, you know, we've got our behavior matrix and all of that stuff. That they follow those pieces. They do a lot of teaching and reteaching.
But these are people who've talked, get questioned every year.
Yeah. And I couldn't do mine without them. I, I mean, no.
Can you give me a favor and say their names?
Yeah. Um, so Jen Walker is, um, this is her six years. Six year, she's kind of done at several durations, grade level, life of the last two years. She supports pre-K through grade four. Um, Shannon, this is her second year or third year in this role, one of the two.
Yeah. She's five through eight.
Five through eight. And then Melinda Johnson is a Danville institution, institution and staple and has. Supported these kids, their grandparents, their parents, their aunts, their uncles, their cousins. Um, and she supports. And then they work so tightly together that they all support each other. So although they have like, this is, is the great thing. This is the need and they go and they, they didn't mean bullying. They are a big reason of why we do other things. And we wouldn't do anything else.
Most of the time that, that's not on my piece. It just needs a minute.
We said to support five through twelve on one room. That was not working.
So if somebody tells you to push back. But it's hard because people, they, they, they wanna tell you.
Sure. Yeah. I like, I haven't gotten anything very specific. I'm not like coming with a.
And our council is another great resource. They don't specifically help with this whole entire process, but they obviously are a crucial, play a crucial role.
It is good to know that we are not starting from a shared vocabulary. And I think that's, uh, that's an important piece to do.
I often kind of, when I reread back, I say, okay, so something like this unkind thing is happening. And I do not use that word in my, just to, just as. Ten years, ten years in the state.
You guys know this is all back to front, front to back.
I think Tim can attest to like the, the, the classroom piece, like teachers have to do because they stop, they stop so much. Right? Like you have to be our true frontline, um, and then, and understand it as well so that you can report it.
Yeah. I've had several teachers, several times, I'll just stop the kids in the moment and say, you, you realize what you're currently doing? And if you were to continue this behavior, what that means, I mean, just really have an understanding. Yeah. It's a bunch of spinning plates. Change the world, they said.
All right. I'm gonna move on from that. Um, TruX contract, I sent you guys all the email. Matt and I had a meeting with TruX and the thirty thousand laws that we committed will be lost. Let them continue the work and that money is committed. We're hoping to have some planning done. When we come out of, if the state changes their mind and rechanges that law back, that is not punitive to improve your building. And we hope to have these plans placed. That's what that email was about. And so they're, they're gonna, we're through the bullying principles for the most part. There may be some board reports that are just based on that report. We don't need a new community outreach. We're back in more of, um, an ethereal state. Not necessarily gonna happen. But we don't, I don't wanna, we didn't wanna lose the money. Matt, Matt is reading this here if we didn't wanna.
Let's get our concrete rock and continually repeal that and have planning done, ready to go.
So that's that. About some, um, simple facility things, I hope, simple. Uh, we, and this was, this was to be a discussion item and this is how the other thing fell off, I think. And. And so do you have some specific things that you wanna look into to bring us?
I, I mean, I think we, we all know, like there's the big systems, right? We know that we've got some big systems that are struggling. And again, those are gonna be emergency basis, I think. But we also have like aesthetic pieces. One of the worst things that I think of is the bathrooms down by the gym. Aside from the fact they're all like rusted out, there's the gaps in, I don't know, the men's stall. So I can't attest to that. But in the women's stall is about three quarters of an inch in the doors and it's just not pleasant, right? To sit there and do business. Uh, so there's things like that that are, it, it seems really small, but it actually makes really, people really, really uncomfortable.
Especially because staff and students are all using the same bathroom.
Right. And, and that's, that's the one I think of because that is the most public facing bathroom. It's used all the time. Right. Right. And I have no, no idea how much that costs. I can, I'm happy to have Brandon figure it out. This might fit into his budget as we like get closer to the end of the year to figure it out. But it's also like, what are we wanting to do aesthetically to be the place people want to be? There's, we've done some painting, but we've done a lot of painting ourselves and have shows in some areas. Um, we did not paint that there by Route Two and not shows because it's fantastic. And so there's just things like that that I'm wondering a professional to them. You know, like where, where do we want, where do we want to spend money? While we wait on the state to foot all their funds.
So some of this would be the number, what is the comfort, where do we have, um, sources? How much money we have on the cover? That once the heat goes on, there's no control of the heat. And if that is a, that might be solved and we might come across. Yeah. So I think expect some knowledge.
So my feeling would be is why don't you go ahead and like pick the top three, work with Brandon, get some prices. I'll work with Michael Concessi. No, I, what I meant was like, what are those top three things you want? Bathrooms for one. I don't know if that's your top one or is that your third one, right?
Threshold on it. So what is it actually doable within, so I, I think you actually sort of enough to say, what can we do for less than this much for the project? Because if you're going into your top ones, you're now back into. And that's not a reality.
Heating controls is not a reality unless you're actually wanting us to buy individual box fans for each room.
We do have the threshold. So do we want to do a project like the HVAC or the heating up to that nine hundred thousand we, that Eric estimated, I think it was. Remember we did the estimate for where a threshold is with the, um, with the cap, with the cap, get taxed more or have to pay more. So I think if there is something, I mean, we have so many urgent things, but maybe that's more the question is, do we want to do one of those things? That keeps us under that threshold that, you know, planned up this year. I think the, I agree the heating controls is a huge thing. I think the other two, two months are the electric or the plumbing. Um, and the fact that we've got two floods and you can't access shut off sometimes like that. And so it's just a matter of, it's just. It, it is, but it's like, because there's been so many additions and I don't think that it just didn't have a plan. And so that's.
I hate to say, I don't even have forty-five million. Go down that road. We're looking at what for? So that ties into the TruX work though. So are we, our plan is to wait till the spring and come up with a plan after we know what the state is doing.
Things that she's asking for, things that, that would be in the TruX work.
I'm not, you know, we all know that electric's a big thing.
Students have to be here all day. How do you make it comfortable and, and comfortable in a different way? Because like you, nobody wants to walk through it. You don't wanna be like, my cousin's in town, you shouldn't come to my school. I don't want to go there. Like, you know, that's kind of.
But, but let's say, okay, we're gonna say you have ten grand from the reserve fund.
No institutional costs for things. You're just outrageous. Like you wanna buy one of those chairs versus going to someplace else and buy the chair. That's got markup off the end game. It's just institutional quality cost. So when we're talking about those dividers, Clayton was mentioning. Granted, these were the old metal kind. Now they have P V skin. They have several different styles out there, um, that don't. Um, that don't arouse. I don't know what the cost is, but thirty thousand is, I was gonna say thirty thousand doesn't surprise me. I didn't bat an eye when I heard that number.
Yeah.
But that. Going into this place and you can see that, that the holes where they are.
Yeah.
Yeah. And function. I feel like if you could bring up a tire on some of those. An insurance claim.
Yeah, so, okay.
Yeah, do you want to spend your tax dollars on that or on your insurance?
Right. You know the situation.
Do we want to be like standing facility improvement as much as possible or.
Sure.
And then standing and if we don't have it, we don't have it.
You talk facilities, right? These are the things that we want to do. And then obviously you go. And you know that already. Talk to the facility. How would that relationship work best? Keep him in that little, then in.
I'll agree that we want you to be able to improve your building. You find out what you want and what it costs and I'll tell you how much we have.
Yeah, I mean.
You can have one door.
Yeah.
Those are.
Which one do you want? We have the phase in the doors, you know, that's type of.
The consciousness with the. Community room. So, so right now if somebody comes in, they got access to the whole school. You, you could just, um. Well, if they come, if they came in now.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Um, someone comes to the school board. Now, sure. Okay. But during the school board meeting, you only have, um, the main doors open. Everything else is locked. You got the bathrooms, you got, um, I'll call it a community room. Okay. Where you would. Right, you have your board meetings and just a lot of things instead of having it. We don't have that room. Up in the middle of the school. Well, you have to move things around.
I don't have that service. That's. Life as it is.
And then you include those, including the improvement of those bathrooms in on the community room project.
We will see.
I want to go on that. I want to go on this. I want to see what you can do here.
It's at the end of the, oh, how much money is left? I don't.
There's, there's enough for three, the seven points. Sixty thousand dollars. Just about the principal.
Great.
So yeah, that sounds good.
And this is a ten thousand dollar project.
And this is the annual, right?
Yeah. This is the, this is, this is the all portion of the project.
Oh, the soccer field tonight looks gorgeous.
Yeah, the only, I think the only thing on here that's extra is the new storage building and then the trees that fell down from the. Microberth.
Yeah, right, that was amazing.
Yeah. So those are still down.
Here's the thing. Okay.
Right, Jim.
We add this out of order this. This is not one direction. So. We can, and we're, we're, we're just pretty gonna talk about it and take, walk it back from the action that we shouldn't take. This is a better legal thing. So, but can you meet?
Oh, we aren't gonna, we're not gonna do it just.
I'm gonna see if you want to do it.
For five minutes. You said four minutes and forty seconds or something.
Well.
As, as, as the meeting is going on, I'm bouncing it out of my brain and I see that it's all the way off. This is not posted anywhere.
I can meet Thursday or I can meet Monday.
On Thursday, now my, on Thursday, they have to be.
Great.
Whether Katie can or.
Has to go to.
Hosting stations. She can email me and tell me where to drive them to.
Okay, cuz I.
I. By at some point. Things that are hosting stations.
Great. But as a bucket of this, I can a hundred percent be better.
Okay, so, yeah.
Thursday.
Thursday. In my calendar right now.
Thursday at five thirty. This is, so. We're gonna, I'm gonna, we're gonna leave that on the agenda. We've got a few minutes. We're gonna. We chose not to add. And I'll tell you why. Five thirty on six.
You need either that's a theater or you did.
No, no. It's, it's fine. It's five thirty on Zoom. I guess I'll be in the building.
I guess I'll be with you.
I might be, I, I'm dropping kids off. I think I might be coming through anyway, so I could swing by too rather than.
I'll, I'll be here.
Okay, hey, so. Address some, which is as a future agenda item. If you want to go over this. In a minute. Something's. So. Um, we can, we can talk about this now, obviously, if we're not gonna act on it, you guys have the numbers in front of you here, so just take these numbers from them and then be ready to act on them on Thursday at five thirty.
Thursday at five.
This morning and this morning. And then we, we may have to take action on that and we can move on. And we can teach Jenna and also, um, eating day, but right now I've got a public. So we have one number.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I've been like.
My brain is like, why aren't you in bed?
My bad.
It's like your longest meeting ever. Not your fault, Eric.
Would you, so.
Is it public time?
Public time is. Can I question?
Can you say your name first, though?
Oh, sorry, Ellen Foster.
Okay, nice to meet you.
Good name.
Are you, is the school involved with Everybody Wins? Vermont State A D program because I understand that the children, this reading from the CCSU meeting, that there's a problem with. With the reading score.
Tell me.
Walden's. M T at Gmail.
Walden M T at. Our first question, Jenny. So somebody write that down. Which, which is. Reading is fundamental?
It's no, that, that's longer fundamental.
So are you.
Everybody. I have the, one of the principals will look it up.
It's where mentors come in and listen to kids read and read with them. And it's a, it's a adult support child program.
Thanks, Ellen. We'll look at that.
I don't, I don't think.
Okay.
And then you have a second question?
No, because I, I want to know how many students are in this school and Eric just told me, I just, uh, I have mentors that can come in is why I'm just throwing this out there. If they, if you have students that are below grade level reading, I have them taught on to people, um, today. I have some people that can come.
That's great.
And spend time. So that's why I'm here.
Thank you.
Right. Please follow up. Future Jenna.
Exactly.
Everybody.
Top of it.
I've said, said a whole. See if we started and then there's, there's some. Um. Check, check. Major. Just feel check, check background.
Okay, I'll, I'll let you get off the rest of the.
Hope not much more.
Hopefully not much more.
Thank you, Ellen.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Nobody else said it. Sharon said, uh, thank you for letting her listen and she had to take off.
All right, now, future agenda item. At our next meeting, we're going to have this. The five thirty. The, um.
Start next meeting.
Yeah.
Yeah. That's, that's.
Excited. Twice the agenda items.
One agenda item.
Because that's gonna be a six.
You're being go-karting.
So five thirty instead of six. V S B A. That same night. And so only, um. And then you, 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 you get us a thought on the V S B A. There. It's just, it's originally, because this Friday, and if you guys would come, that'd be great. If you don't come, that would also be great. And, um, they are super awesome. They are, um, it's a lot more workshop-y and you can go to breakout rooms. And, um, we talk about things at, at a different level and the frustration to things that sometimes where policy can be in a place that's valuable. This is pre-culture to some of the, um. So we talk about, uh, some of the.
Oh, I know what you're, resolutions.
Resolution, the V S B A, and they, they have the resolutions. And then they vote it out at the weekly meeting, which are October twenty-fourth, September twenty-third, back in the future. So if the V S B A have a radar. Propose, propose resolution, webinars, nine twelve, that's something that you could attend. Ten seventeen.
Wait, ten seventeen is the business meeting?
For V S B A.
Oh, oh, oh.
And then there's the twenty-fourth, that's twenty-fourth.
I'm not ready.
There's a lot of things that you, you can potentially go to. You get the updates online. So those are, those are more, more things that you could go to.
But our next meeting.
Our next meeting on Thursday, five thirty.
Four minutes, forty seconds.
I have to be at this other meeting.
Yeah.
So I can be here at six.
Um, and then next.
Our agenda items are.
And you're designing that. Just. Seventy-five. For our next meeting. And October meeting is, um. Somebody tell me.
Uh.
The first, October the first. This document should be attached to the agenda. That document will be attached. Coming.
Thank you.
And that, that balance.
Yep, and that's my to-do list for tomorrow morning.
And so, the on ten one, on ten one, we're gonna want financial information, we can, uh, it would be great to have school enrollment.
Yeah.
Especially thinking about there. Not October, but you're gonna, you're gonna, you're actually gonna have any, anything to be great and hopefully tuition students as well.
There's a foreign student today. Yeah, we have two, uh, international students, exchange students and two students who just enrolled.
From where?
Uh, one from Belgium, one from Germany.
That's the foreign exchange. How about the other two?
Uh, Saint J.
Saint J.
Hmm. Um, as part of the financial piece, something that rolled over to this year that we haven't talked about yet is the athletic director position moving to CCSU instead of Danville's budget. We remember last year we talked about it and we're like, well, it's not gonna happen this year. We should talk about it next year, um, seeing as that.
Appreciate you bringing that up.
So that discussion happens. Not here.
Right. Well, I was just following, we did talk about, it's in our budget currently, so I was seeing about what we're doing.
In our, in our budget currently, um, our budget currently, we, we pay for athletic.
Right.
We don't, and we don't, or assistance.
Right.
Have it, field. And then all. Field pays a stipend on Randy's cell.
Right, but it's not divided equally, really. It's like a thousand dollar stipend. That was what it was this current year, but thinking forward to our next budget cycle. We had talked about, we had this conversation about potentially moving that position, seeing as it's coordinating all the different schools, um, that both of those positions.
So this becomes the business of this, of not then.
Well, we're paying for it, so it's, I think.
So I need to take that, your question has to go to C C S U board and not this.
Yeah, I'm just bringing it up to the account last year.
I'm happy to have you brought it up.
That's tied to our.
Next C C S U board meeting currently is on September, this is sixteen.
Yep, so we can add. Do you want to have that as a discussion item as well for the agenda?
I think that we can have that as a discussion item because we're for Calum United and.
Right.
Calum United and, um.
That's great. You're doing that because I've just set up a meeting with the two, um. Uh, athletic directors as well as with Michael to kind of discuss along these lines.
Yeah, that'd be great. Thank you.
So that's gonna go first, C C S U and then we'll report back. Let's see. Let's see where. So that is a C C S U. That's all I got. No. I don't think.
Yep, we've done it.
Okay, and with. Eight thirty. I think the most of the adjournments here, all in favor, second from.
Dave was second, okay.
All in favor of adjourn at eight thirty-three. Three sixty.
All right. The little red light's still on. You're pretty. It'll be up there.
Everybody.
Not, I'm sure.